In order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Throw calls?
Sing?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
Rankner?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Hyster?
I don't know if we ever had a budget meeting before that we didn't owe eight hundred thousand dollars to start. So John, this could be the easiest budget meeting you ever ran, but it's up to you.
It may be. Well, there's a couple of things that we want, that I want to bring up. First of all, I announced at the last council meeting that we had November bills that we did not have the money to pay. The good news tonight is that we have paid all of our November bills as of today, December 7th. So we're running a little behind, and to be very frank with you, we need to bring in probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of property tax plus, which may happen, a lot of people pay right at the end of the year. And we need to bring in some earned income tax and so forth here to wrap this up where we're going to end up. Right now, we're projecting, I don't know how that'll last, but we're projecting a deficit of almost sixty thousand unless we, unless we get the money in here. So Treasurer's Office, I know, is committed to try and get as much in as they can, but the budget for this year is still extremely tight and just hoping that we can break even by the end of the year.
What's going to hurt us this year, John, is that July, January 1st, we have payable.
Okay.
Right off the bat, so that's a holiday, so payroll will be paid in December most likely, that'll be a Thursday. So because the first of Friday, so the banking transaction probably happened that Thursday for everybody for a holiday. So that's, we're going to bite this. So that's going to be next year fifty-five, sixty thousand or so.
Right. Yeah, so we're, we're not out of the woods for this year yet, by long stretch of your imagination. Okay, a couple of items that I want to bring up in this, in this session. As you know, I made most of the corrections. One of the things that was in the previous budget that, that I took out, and after discussions with Dave, we would like to add, and with Brad, we had, we had put in there, for Brad, we had put in, Dave had put in longevity pay, and I took that back out because I felt that, that the chief is not part of the SPOA. But after discussions with Dave and with the chief, I'd like to add that back in. So if you go to line item oh-one, point oh-one, point four-one-zero, point one-two-zero, sorry, Chief of Police, like to take that back up from seventy thousand to sixty-two.
John, I got an objection real quick.
Sure.
What I had talked to the mayor about was making the salary seventy-two-five-hundred.
Okay.
Which would be no longevity at that point.
Okay.
Salary would stay the same at seventy-two thousand two sixty-two. And then the longevity, which I would, would be due, would be twenty-nine hundred dollars. Or twenty, something around there. Actually, the salary went to seventy-three, one-sixty-two with the longevity. What I'm proposing is making it seventy-two-five-hundred, no longevity.
Okay, you're, you're...
Yes.
Satisfied with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to take that line of, item up from seventy thousand two sixty-two, point seventy, to seventy-two thousand five hundred.
Which is a difference of twenty-two hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty cents.
Okay.
John, my question is, is base pay in fifteen, sixty-eight, eighty-five? Am I correct there or what?
Yes, that's correct.
And then he, he would have, well, theoretically, he was the guy, what, two percent?
Right.
Okay, and what does it come out to now, using that sixty-eight, is that about four percent?
Well, with, with this new salary with, I got the longevity, if you had the twenty-six hundred dollars I got the longevity this year, my total salary with longevity was seventy-one-four-eighty-five.
So you're saying sixty-two and the longevity came out to what, John?
The sixty-eight, eighty-five plus the twenty-six hundred was seventy-one-four-eighty-five.
So you've got longevity in addition to that sixty-eight?
Yes.
Yeah, because that's a five percent raise. But we, but what, so what we're saying is that I took the longevity back out of there. It was lumped in together, okay?
So basically, you just put your longevity in your pay and it goes forever and ever and ever.
Yeah.
Sort of.
I would just soon pay the longevity separately.
Not all, not all. Because he's got twenty-two hundred instead of twenty-nine hundred, so it's five hundred dollars less than if he had got all of it.
Because we never gave longevity to the chief. Am I correct about that?
It wasn't in a contract. We never gave him a contract. He still didn't have a contract with everything going on. We weren't going to give him a contract.
I appreciate that, but I didn't realize because we didn't give him a contract that he gets...
Well, then he gets what the other thing, he gets what the other guys get.
Oh, then, okay. In other words, then he's under the same standards as the other people that...
For the salary? That's what we're based on. We always base it on five thousand more than the sergeants.
Because sergeants make, with their longevity, make sixty-six, seven, and sixty. So if it's five thousand over the sergeant, I would be making seventy-one-seven-sixty, not...
So you wanted to go to seventy-two-fifty?
Seventy-two-five.
Yeah, five hundred, John, sorry.
He took his seventy-one and put his longevity in there, it'd be over the seventy-three.
Yes, I did, yes.
Then there is no more longevity next year.
Well, again, that's a contract issue. We hope it gets settled. Right. But we, we have a contract issue coming up, which doesn't affect him to the degree we, he needs, we'll get him a contract next year for the chief, period. But we have the department's contract coming up, which could alter some of these things, depending on what happens out.
Right, I understand that, Dave, but back to the chief though. Back, we come, we work on the contract, longevity shouldn't have anything to play with. Now we've taken that out of the equation.
For all of them, or just for him?
Well...
The contract, we're trying to get it out of everything.
I understand that, but the chief's never got longevity.
Well, I shouldn't say he didn't get longevity, because we paid the last one longevity. So I can't say they never got it. No, I don't remember. Charlie got it back in those days, and Long and Burger, and all that stuff. But Steve got longevity, didn't he, Steve?
No, sir.
Your last year?
No, last year I did, because I was patrolling.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so we have to...
Fire, fire, I did not, but you pointed out, he does not have a contract, like a contract, Mary Wittering, that deleted longevity.
Right. And based on most of the contract, if you had to pass a new contract, we probably would eliminate that too. I'm just saying for right now, we don't, he doesn't have a contract.
So what's your pleasure, John?
I mean, we take, we take the high, you take the seventy-three, put the twenty-nine, you end up at about seventy-five or seventy-four, somewhere there. So this is at least a compromise. I don't want to, if he wants to give us money, I don't want to, I'll take what he offered, seventy-two-five.
Well, and I can see where you're coming from, Dave, but I just want, when it comes to the contract now, I mean, don't...
I think it'll be eliminated, because it's, most of history in the past, they haven't got it.
Either way, for me, I am, I am just a verbal agreement with the mayor right now, I'm not going to, if that salary stays, I'm done with longevity as the chief.
That'll be, that'll be in the contract.
I'm done. I'm, I'm fine with it.
So answer your question as far as, yeah, it'll be eliminated.
There'll be no future longevity for the chief, contract or no contract?
Right.
Right.
One done, same calls comes once.
What's that? And here.
Okay. We had talked about fire hoses? I don't know.
John, John, I have one more item on there.
Go.
Before you get in some, I had the, the records clerk. I had asked to have her salary increased by one dollar, which is a difference of two thousand thirty-five dollars. Reason being is she's been doing the job of two, because one was eliminated a few years ago. I'm just trying to give her one little salary bump that she's been doing for the last few years.
Okay.
John, if...
I saw it in there, I didn't take it back out.
Yeah, yeah, just take it back out.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, it was, John.
Oh, was it?
Yes.
Well, I thought that was in with the twenty-seven, that's not them.
No.
Oh, you mean you want to give her seven percent?
Huh?
The seven percent?
Yes, for the one year.
John, if that's the case, I want to give my employees seven percent.
Yeah.
Well, the bottom line, we, well, we should have done it years ago, that's what we should have done, but we didn't.
Well, you know, Kevin has the same, same situation in his department where his, 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 two people are picking up the work of three. So did we give them seven percent too?
Yeah, we cut last year by department, and we didn't get an increase to accounts payable person. I know it was wanting a part-time wages, but you know, it's, it's something, you know, we're, we're struggling all the way across the board here, folks. We can't be, go ahead and give them the money, a seven percent raise here, come on, we got to make sense here. I'm already the treasurer, I have a say here, but we got to watch what we're spending.
I, I, I...
Pennies nickels here.
I hear what you're saying, but my, my problem is...
These pennies nickels are ten dollars all year at the end of the year, you know?
I hear what you're saying, but what I'm saying is that job is a unique job. It's not something you can just hire somebody off the street to do. She does a lot, it has to be kept confidential, and I think Steve can vouch for that also. We had two people doing that job with a total salary of, I think, at the time, Steve Brown was making twenty-some thousand, twenty-nine, something like that, if not more. And she was making twenty-five. So you went from salaries of forty-seven, forty-eight thousand down to a twenty-seven thousand dollar salary.
How many years ago did Steve Brown leave out there, I don't care?
What's that?
How many years ago did Steve Brown leave?
Twenty-eleven.
Like three or four years ago?
Twenty-eleven?
In between there, she did get a bump above everybody else.
I don't know, most of the chief at the time.
Yeah, she did.
And that bump was because of the fact that Steve left.
I, I don't, I, I can't bear it.
So you're verifying that she did get a bump?
Yes.
Previously?
Do we know how much of a bump it was?
I think it was a quarter percentage.
What's that?
I think it was an extra percentage at the time. Like if everybody had...
It would be in the penny's records downstairs.
Yeah, because I thought we were going straight two percent and covered him across the board. That's what we do.
That was in there now, John, two percent, yeah. All right, who's that talking about?
What are we going to do about it?
They'll leave it the way it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we please verify what that bump was a couple of years ago then?
Yeah.
Can we go look?
I don't know.
Do you want me to go on though?
Just for the next week.
You might as well do it now.
Want me to do that?
Yeah. If you want to know, you might as well do it.
All right, then we can move on.
Go ahead, John, I'll move.
Okay. We had talked about the fire hoses. We had a request for nine thousand dollars for fire hoses. If we're going to do, honor that, we will have to squeeze other places to try to honor that. I don't know how much, can I come back to that a minute?
They said they didn't need it all in one year.
Okay, that's what this was going to ask.
Yeah, because I, I thought they said the nine thousand was just a portion, that they wanted more, but that's...
Well, that was, no, I think nine thousand is the total, that they didn't need it all in one year.
Well, when we come back to it, I was just going to say, and I don't know how much we have to squeeze on the budget, we can't, we can just take that out of the CEBD, because it's only like ten thousand.
Well, it's eligible, we've done it before, I know that's eligible.
All of our CEBG is pledged to the Chesapeake Street project.
Probably for two years, right? Chief, how are you, how are you working on your, your dash cams? You said last time about something, you were going to be able to get a grant. Are you going to be able to get a grant to pay for the whole thing, or is it going to...
That's, it was submitted, we're waiting to hear back.
And that will be a hundred percent payment?
Whatever we have to... It would be a hundred percent, because it was, anything under fifty thousand dollars was a hundred percent. Anything over fifty thousand dollars was, you got a percentage of...
Okay. And how much is...
About thirty, it was like thirty-eight thousand.
Oh, so we're well under that then?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so...
And that was outfit every car.
Okay.
Which doesn't necessarily have that either.
Right, well, we really, really does. But, so let's go back for a minute to police vehicles. We have two new vehicles in here, correct?
We did, go ahead, man.
Yeah, they, they weren't taken out.
Yep.
Now, I have a question. You, you wanted two new vehicles, and you wanted to, to keep, how many?
We'll have six at that point.
How many do we have now that are operational?
Operational?
Yeah.
And one for working?
Well, we have, five equals total. Including the K nine, we have five total, four that are patrol.
You can't have those for...
That's why the K nine, you can't use for regular patrol.
But they're all operation?
Yes.
You can get in and drive them and so, because like, somebody was saying, you had a vehicle that was down, and you were saying something about it. That doesn't, that doesn't count that either.
Cautionary, if I could interject, Chief, if you don't mind.
All right.
Car one and car eight are close to fifty thousand miles, and consistently, the Crown Vic is one of the transmissions at fifty thousand miles. So if you're not going to do the second vehicle, you better factor in two transmissions next year.
Really? I got fifty thousand on my Mustang, it's pristine.
That's Mustang.
You're not driving like they do.
I don't know if it's a flaw in the design, but consistently, when they hit fifty thousand, it will...
That's why we stopped using Chevys a hundred years ago.
Yeah.
One of the things I had mentioned about taking, getting two cars, taking the car five that they currently have, and putting that out of service as a police vehicle, that is the only non-police rated commission vehicle we have.
Okay, well, I, I'm all for upgrading to new vehicles. I think we need new vehicles. My question is, why do we need, why do we need to go to six? When we have eleven officers, why do we need six cars?
Because at any one time, any one of them could be down, or in the shop, or has to go here to go there.
If, if the used ones are going to keep running, we, I agree with you, no, we don't. The bottom line is, you want to get new ones and get rid of the old ones to get back to a rotation or not.
Yeah.
But again, you can talk about fifty thousand miles all you want, we ought to be able to get more than fifty thousand miles off the cars.
Well, we do so, but the issue is that fifty thousand consistently, Crown Vic blew the trains. That's, that's...
That's what happened.
Yeah, we, we just lost, we lost car six last year, that car hit like seventy-five thousand, the train blew again. The, the issue can come by court days, or maybe special duty days, or if you actually run a, a shift, where you have three guys working and something else is happening. You're looking at three, you're looking at supervisor, two patrol officers, and a chief, that's four cars. So as the chief said, if one's down, if somebody's double up, that's down to your patrol.
I don't have any problem with five, but going to six, I just...
Well, we had one, we had eight.
Well, I understand that, but...
But you want to get rid of the new ones on it for five, or you want to get rid of the old ones?
I'd rather get two new ones and get rid of, and get rid of the two old ones.
I agree on that, okay.
Okay, so we'll get, we'll buy two new ones...
If you're looking at cameras for five, I don't look...
If you're looking at cameras for six.
That's what's budgeted? Do you know what that means? I don't know what that amounts to, though.
Well, sixty, thirty-five, seven thousand.
Five thousand, something like that.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, my concern is that that extra vehicle needs inspected, needs fuel, it needs insurance, it needs, you know, so you're not just have... We're adding cost in addition to the twenty-six thousand dollars that we have in here for the vehicles. We're adding additional cost because we have...
But at one point last year, you had six cars. You had six cars last year.
Yeah, that's what they were all broken down on that, though.
I'm just saying, if you had six cars, one, two of them blew transmissions, we got the one fixed, and we put the other one out of service. And now we're down to five. I want to get back to the six number. That's what I'm saying, we had six vehicles last year in operation.
We had five and two of them brand new.
Yeah, two of them brand new, and one of them's, I mean, two years old.
But that's what I'm saying, we ran into a lot, we ran, we're still running into problems with five, that's what I'm saying.
Well, but the salaries and money isn't there for six vehicles.
Right, and I'd rather have two new ones. So I'd rather give up a used one than a new one.
Exactly. So Brad, you got the two new cars.
Okay. Okay. In two thousand eleven, the records clerk's salary was twenty-one-six. In two thousand twelve, the record clerk was twenty-four-nine. Two thousand thirteen, the record clerk was twenty-six-two. So the record clerk has been consistently getting higher raises than everybody else.
Mary Harrison, that ten percent or better?
Forty-six hundred, forty, four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars in raises since two thousand eleven.
Well, John, you say it went from twenty-one to twenty-four?
Twenty-one-six-thirty to twenty-four-nine-sixty.
So that, that first year after she was there, she got...
That was the first year.
Over a ten percent raise.
Yeah. And the following year went from twenty-four-nine, the following year was probably two percent, twenty...
Probably a dollar or two.
Yeah.
It's probably a dollar or two. That's...
What, for next, for this year?
For last, for two thousand eleven to two thousand twelve.
Had to be two bucks.
Probably two dollars, because one dollar would be two thousand eighty dollars.
Yeah. Okay, I think we're, I, I think, you know, she's been, she had a major boost in over that three year period.
And you got thirteen hundred.
So...
We're leaving the two new cars in?
The two new cars are in. By, by, the discussion is, do we, do we want to, are we only going to turn one in, or are we going to turn two in?
Well, you, you budgeted pretty much the same amount for your maintenance and everything else.
That's my point.
Last year, with six cars, for six cars. That's what I'm saying, last year, we had six working cars, so, so two of them broke, we got the one fixed, and it's yellow.
Right, so we have money for maintenance for six cars.
You still have ma, money for maintenance for six vehicles.
Definitely, because we're spending twenty-six thousand dollars to get new two cars.
Right.
What's, help me out, Brad. What's your point?
My point is, you still have six vehicles, all your maintenance, your gas, all that stuff is for six cars. That did change.
So at the end of the year, you might have a surplus in that department, but you're always over to other departments, so you'll spend it.
Well, and some of those figures aren't my fault.
I didn't say they were, I just said you over...
About some are and some aren't, so let's let it into that discussion.
But we're saying, I, I'd rather give up one of those used cars if we need to stay...
I'm, I'm saying get rid of one, yeah.
You're saying you're back to, that's right, Ken?
Back to five cars. I don't think we need six cars either. I really, this is proven to me, but we haven't gotten that far yet.
Operationally, it makes it harder, five cars coming.
How many people drive cars, don't you?
Nobody.
Your pleasure, gentlemen.
Well, I'm just saving that camera, five cars.
Well, it's only going to save, the camera's a grant, so it'll save about seven thousand dollars on the camera. It's going to save probably somewhere around, it'll save somewhere around thirty-five hundred dollars in maintenance.
How much money we need for this hose?
Is this grant guaranteed, Brad?
If we do have, if we do five this year and five next year, that would be... So if we, if we turn in two patrol cars, that'll give us enough to buy half of the, half of the hose this year.
Hasn't always been in my budget?
And half of the hose next year.
I don't think it was added. He wasn't, it wasn't, nine wasn't added in his budget, was it?
Nothing's added for that.
No, then we didn't add any hose in the budget, did we?
Yeah, it was nine thousand.
No, it was just a hand note, but did anybody put it in the budget?
Yeah, it's in here. Under Rich? Under four-one-two-sixty.
No, that's, oh, over there.
What, what's the hole?
What number you Rick five before?
Three.
It's in there.
Yeah, hose is in there, John.
Is the hose in there?
The hose is already in this budget.
Okay. Okay. Well, we can do the hose then without, if you, again, I, I'm not sure we need six, six police vehicles. I mean, it'd be nice to have ten, but, right.
I, I think the thing to do is, when we buy it, we'll take, we'll get a list of everything, where we sit with all of them, decide if we want to actually use six of them, or you put one in another department, or there's anybody else in your car.
Well, one's definitely going.
I need one. Was that, that one, that two thousand three Crown Vic that already died?
So, one's definitely going.
That leaves us with what, six? What's that, even we gave him one?
I said, we get the two new cars, I'll take car five, and give that to the code office.
And that still leaves us with six?
Car five is the...
Car five is the Ford sport, it's not police rated.
Okay.
That can go to the code office, that's still in good working condition, only problem is it's not a police rated vehicle.
And they don't need that, so that's...
That's why I want to, I'm going to put that one out of service for us.
Leaves us with five or six?
That leaves us still with six cars then. If you buy two right now, we'll have seven. But like I said, I'll give one to Rick, to his department.
But here's something, Dave, and we see it all the time, you get two new cars, and the oldest car in the system is which one?
I have one.
One. Is that the highest mileage?
Yeah.
You got two Crown Vics, which one's the oldest? Unmarked one or...
The unmarked.
The unmarked is the oldest one.
What's the highest mileage car you have right now?
Cars, I have car five.
How many miles are on that?
That's close to fifty, I think.
I cracked fifty the other day.
Well, what I'm getting at, Dave, if you're going to keep the sixth car, the oldest car is out front, that's the one that's driven every day. But what you do, they jump into a brand-new car, they drive around, wave to everybody. No sir.
Well, that's a police, that's a police... That would be nice.
No, what I'm getting at...
But I understand what you're saying, yes.
Where the old one out, not the new one, you know?
We have, we, we do that.
And then when one of the transmission goes, or...
Sarah, just trying to make a point, that's all.
Well...
The car two sits, car two sits in the lot right now, that's the newest car.
I think I know her, Matt, for sixteen years.
Martin Taylor is on top of that stuff, he rotates the car, so they're getting moved, because you got to run. You can't just let them sit, and they get, they get rotated out.
Right, but I'm saying, we have fifty thousand miles, and we have to run that element for fifteen thousand instead of the brand-new one for twenty thousand, that type of stuff.
But some of the reasons you, you run some of them new ones is because they're under warranty. So when you're running them, and something breaks on them, you still got, you don't want to let it sit there for three years, and the warranty runs out, and then you've got to start it up and take off, and something breaks on it, and the warranty's out. So, I mean, we just take cars.
Can you buy extended warranty on them?
What's that?
Can you buy extended warranties?
You can put that in the budget if you want.
Can you do it on a police car, though?
I doubt it.
I'm sure you could, you could buy any, except a warranty on any vehicle.
What, what kind of warranty come with, like, standard new vehicle?
Yeah, most of them are front bumper to bumper, most of them are bumper to bumper.
Five years, a hundred thousand now, or whatever they are? I mean, they're up more than what they used to be.
That's right for you.
Yeah.
What would the new ones be?
This Taylor is very good, Taylor is very meticulous on...
Well, I'm not saying that, but what would the warranty be?
Was there any more discussion on GPS?
Could talk about that next.
Because that's coming in clue with that programmable electronic right into the computer system itself, that gives you a warning on any problems occurring through the computer system.
Yeah, that, that...
I'm worried about the transmissions and the engines falling out.
Go ahead.
At the end, that's, that's into that.
Just passed around a vote from Verizon for GPS units for police and code office vehicles, and probably a couple of light trucks, this is ten units, so the, probably a couple of light trucks in the other departments. Installation of the units, hardware and the installation cost, two thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty cents. Monthly monitoring costs, nineteen dollars a unit, one hundred eighty-nine fifty for all, for, for ten units. Total cost per year for monitoring, two thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars. So a little under five thousand, we can equip all of the units in the police department, the code office, and several, and probably most of the light pickups with GPS.
But that also provided maintenance too, John, remember?
Right, that's got the maintenance and everything in it. If, if this tracks, this tracks how many miles the car has on it, how many miles, how long it stood idling, how, at what speed it went. I mean, this, it, it, just give us a whole bunch of fleet information that would be really good to know, help us to manage our fleet. In addition to that, I believe that the day has come when, when you, if you're, if you have a police and code departments, you have to have, you have to have some kind of mechanism to track those vehicles. People are getting, cities and municipalities are getting sued all the time, and dash cams and GPS units have proven to be a real, a real help in defending those lawsuits. So there's money in the budget, and I will present this on Monday night next week for approval. Just wanted you all to see what the numbers are, it's, because it's, the purchase is only twenty-two hundred dollars, we don't have to bid it. And it's, I'll be working with, with one of our current vendors, and they can install them within a week or two of the time that we give them the, the order. So just to let you know that that is here, it's already in the budget, so the money's there, we don't have, we don't have to hunt for it. So just to let you know that that is here, it's already in the budget, so the money is there, we don't have, we don't have to hunt for it. Other than that, gentlemen, unless somebody has something that they really will summarize, we're going to, we're going to take Brad's salary up to seventy-two, five. We are not going to make any further adjustment to the record clerk's salary. We are going to buy two new police cars, and we are going to sell one or give one to the code department. We'll try six. If it's a problem, we'll, we'll look at the next budget and go back to five. We can, it'd be pretty simple to go back to five, just to get rid of one of the old ones. We have money in the budget for the GPS tracking, and we'll have money in the grants, if there is a little extra money in here in case we need to match part of that grant. About five grand in here, so if from that thirty-five thousand dollar grant, if we have to match ten percent, we, you know, or even twenty percent, we can match it. And the hose is in there, and the hose is in there.
Is that under the line item for the hose, four one one, two six zero, Kevin?
For the hoses?
Yeah, I'm trying to find that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, but.
Says four one one point two six oh, fire equipment.
Right, but it looks like the nine thousand might have been rigged, but they'll leave it out.
It's different, like, maybe we just added it there.
Okay, that was my question.
The nine thousand's in there.
Okay, is that added in, or is that taken out?
It's added in.
That is added in.
Yeah, that was, we're a little confused.
Fourteen of them.
They make the changes by color, so you know which meeting a change was made, and it just doesn't show up.
Well, we got black and white photos, so don't show it.
Right, right.
But the light color, okay, it is in there.
Didn't want that used color, right?
So with that change that you made on Brad's salary is gonna put us over in the budget now, so we're gonna have to make an adjustment on that somewhere.
Yeah, we're gonna make an adjustment out of department two. So Brad, I'm helping you out, coming around mighty quick.
Well, I find, just to interject real quick. Under.
Professional services.
Unused benefits, you have that twenty-five thousand, four ten, one seventy-seven. My theory on that is, I understand, it's good that we're putting that in for some of these benefits that might be unused when somebody retires. But my feeling is, some of that will be attributed or taken, if somebody retires and you're using that money, you're not gonna hire somebody the next day to bring them in. So you're gonna absorb some of the salary numbers, you know what I mean, with the patrolman leaves tomorrow, obviously, you're not gonna hire the next day. You're gonna probably have a couple of weeks or maybe a month or two of his salary that you're gonna be absorbing anyways. You might, possibly, you could drop that down to twenty thousand.
Here's your problem, Benny leaves tomorrow, they'll use that. That's some guys, not all guys. That'll cover everybody right now, if we drop that down.
That twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
That twenty-five thousand will cover just him.
That's what I'm saying. So I don't wanna drop it down, cause what happens, him and Hawkins both go?
I'm not worried about Hawkins, he has no time.
Well, I'm telling you.
He's gonna use more than himself.
Don't wanna get caught short. I mean, the worst thing that can happen is have the unexpected.
I'll talk to you afterwards about it. I'll tell you what my.
That's why we're in the situation we're in now.
Right.
Okay, but stronger than the Bayonne. Okay, anybody else? There, you have any, any changes? Anybody else?
So you say it's gonna become a professional service we got?
Yeah, our professional services in department two.